I call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, May 6, p.m. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the rule call, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilman Carper.
Here.
Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
Okay, after last month's meeting, we had an executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and potential litigation. We'll now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, you may come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to under five minutes.
Don't everybody jump up all at once. Devin Saylor, 424 Crawford Avenue. So before I get started, I do want to say that this ends with egg on my face, so, you know, that should be reassuring. I wanted to say that the cleanup was very successful, and I wanted to thank everybody and part of the city, you know, and city government that supported that and helped us out with that, especially you, Nate, over there, okay? I see you. That garbage was picked up lickety-split. I mean, it was awesome, so thank you guys again for all of that. Where else would I want to say this? With all that being said, though, you know, picking up the litter and getting everybody to volunteer was kind of very informative for me. I learned a lot of stuff going out there and seeing where all this litter was sitting, where it was sitting, why it was sitting where it was. You know, I mean, we had public parks without garbage cans. There's, you know, I guess it's like where the shrubs and stuff grow up real high that gets caught up on like these lots and stuff, which I don't know if they're owned by the city or not, or if they're just like, you know, we demoed them or something. But, I mean, and the public, you know, private businesses where you see all the fences where there's like garbage sitting there that's been there for years. I mean, we picked up some of that stuff between those fences. And this isn't really me chastising anybody on the city or government or anything like that. It's just more so like, listen, I get it. We got enough problems with, you know, housing crisis and all kinds of different things. We're trying to figure out street repairs, you know, anything with the law enforcement. So I think more so what I wanted to come up here and say is that I would really entertain the idea, and hopefully maybe you guys would too, if the council was willing to maybe take like, you know, three of you guys and sit down maybe and form a little committee and talk about some possible solutions for some of these things, like I brought up like the garbage cans and so on. I mean, we found heroin needles, you know, up in Gospel Hill Park, you know, in the tree line and stuff. I mean, it was wild, you know? But with all that being said, so here's the egg on my face. So Nate, I sent you that list with all of the drop points, and I missed one. Tuckahoe Park, we have about 16 bags of trash sitting there, and that's my fault. So whatever I have to do to rectify that, you know, let me know. You can send me an email and cuss me out if you need be, but that's pretty much it. So I just want to thank you guys again for everything, and if you have any questions, you know, let me know.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, and thanks, everyone, for your presence here today. I introduced myself last month as Jordan, and I am president of a local chapter of a nationwide nonprofit organization called Wild Ones: Native Plants and Natural Landscapes. I am also a new local business owner of Ecotopian Earth Care LLC, an edible and ecological landscaping team with native plants that contracts for the DCNR to convert lawns into native perennial meadows and upland forests for free to the landowner. I spoke broadly last month about my mission here and what I would like to take action towards in helping to create for my hometown. This month's meeting, I am more inclined to go in greater detail on a particular topic: Community Food Forests, aka edible parks. A community food forest is an urban and suburban approach to food production that involves the creation of a perennial garden mimicking a young woodland ecosystem. These communities of plants are intentionally placed together to optimize space, nutrient exchange, pollination, productivity, and biodiversity. So it starts with the canopy layer, or overstory trees, ranging from 50 to 70 feet tall. These trees are best spaced out at 12 trees per acre, which will allow space for sunlight to hit the lower levels of plants. Some native canopy species that do well in this system are honey locusts, black cherry, and hickory, because of their overall shape and late foliage growth allows for more sunlight to get through. Edible native canopy species like persimmon trees, pecan trees, and chestnut trees are great to implement into these systems from scratch. The lower tree level, which often can be seen as ornamental, only range from 15 to 25 feet tall. Examples of these native edible trees are pawpaws, native plums, hazelnuts, service berries, mulberries, et cetera. Next is the shrub layer, species like native elderberries, blueberries, and black raspberries. And then comes the herbaceous layer of edible perennial leafy greens like slender nettle, cut-leaf coneflower, Ohio spiderwort, the rhizome roots like sunchoaks, wild potato vine, ground nut, the ground covers of strawberry and dewberry, and then the vines that climb up the trees like passion fruit and riverbank grape. These patches of layered plant communities are agriculture in 3D, teamed up to complement one another in symbiotic relation. In other words, these plant guilds are set up to work as a team. These native edible plants are more calorie-dense and hold higher vitamin and mineral content than any of our expensive produce at the grocery stores that have been over-manipulated. The riverbank grape leaf are perennial, abundant, and edible raw with a lemony taste, high iron, magnesium, and calcium, which Americans are highly deficient in. The way for this edible forest to become a park or blend it in with an already-established park is to create a network of pathways that guide people through the plant guilds. This creates the opportunity for people to connect directly to a natural biodiverse ecosystem that harbors an abundance of seasonal food, forming a healthy and educational relationship and respect for nature's true intention. This ties in with the Greenway Trail system as representing and enhancing potential hubs along the trail like Garfield, Gospel Hill, Keith Athletic Field, Highland, Tuckahoe Park, and any other park or underutilized green space that we have left in our city. I was told by Beth Futrick of Blair Conservation District, Stephen McKnight of ABCD Corp, and the Blair Planning Commission to focus on one main hub to start, and then connect a trail to the next hub, and so on, until all the hubs are connected throughout Altoona and Blair County at large. Tuckahoe Park is where I would like to start. It is centrally located in the valley with one of our greatest areas of flat, green public space. It features remarkable cliffs and caves that people would travel far by car to climb and hike. I've spent a lot of time on those cliffs recently and pulled out 19 bags of trash during our red-up Altoona community cleanup. Thanks for providing the bags and gloves. I plan to volunteer more time to remove the immature graffiti from the rocks and offer a more unique way for kids to more artistically express themselves. There is a way to forage natural pigment locally, and these pigments can be used as drawing utensils that are not permanent. I would like to invite local artists of Altoona to draw cave-like paintings of local wildlife and then leave these pigment drawing utensils in buckets placed inside of the caves for those graffiti kids. I spoke with the Altoona Bible Church pastor and leaders who have over three acres of woodlands that neighbor Tuckahoe and its cliffs. There is already a trail system going through these woodlands, and the mill-run stream runs right alongside. They were pleased with the cleanup and noticeably liked the idea of the Greenway Trails and Community Food Forest. They spoke it over at their board meeting yesterday, and I should be getting back some information and an update if they are willing to host this project on their underutilized land that is full of invasive species and trash that I also cleaned up. Combining Tuckahoe with the cliffs and Altoona Bible Church woodlands would create a large, unique hub for the Greenway Trails to pass through. I spoke to a resident who neighbors Tuckahoe Park, and he told me of the history of this specific area. Said it used to have a creek, then that there was a city dump on top of the hill, that there was... that there was a super-rich Baker family, as we know of Baker Mansion, that had a farm nearby. He told me people used to gather and to rock-climb the cliffs. He told me some not-so-good things, too, like when it rains heavy that our city sewer feces overflows into mill-run stream about 38 times per year. What I'm trying to say is that the place changed multiple times throughout the year, and it would be nice to see a community food forest happen there. The neighbor sure thought so, and many others do, too. So I made a petition to get signatures for those who are interested in seeing this plan from 2005 get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more public comment, we will close the floor and move into our presentation, the 2022 Altoona Police Department Annual Report. Take it away, Chief.
Thank you. Let it wake up. While that's getting started, I'll try to go through this data as quick as possible. I know you've got a lot on your agenda tonight, so try not to sound like an auctioneer, but I'll go through it pretty quick. There's a lot of information on these slides, but I can always go back if there's questions afterwards. Started off with the personnel report for the end of last year. Machine's not cooperating. This doesn't count against my time for the over-under. It's warming up. There's starting. So this was, you know, December 31st, a snapshot of what our department looked like. We had two vacancies, along with three in the academy and FTO program. When they're in the academy, it's approximately six months long. The FTO program is about four months long, so those numbers really don't help us operationally. Matter of fact, when they're in the FTO program, they actually take resources because we have to have an officer with them. Figured I'd throw in year-to-date, just because we are a third of the way through the year. I'll talk about it more later on, but you can see we restructured and moved some personnel between divisions to try to be a little more efficient, but you'll notice we have three vacancies and four in the academy FTO, so essentially seven down operationally. And I have three officers that are planning to retire here in the next month or so. Activities report, you can see 25,566 calls. That's an average of 70 calls per day. That's up from 63 calls per day in 2021. I'm about to go into the UCRs, and for those that have heard my spiel the last couple of years, you know that the UCRs aren't a great, accurate tool to measure crime. It's well documented on the deficiencies, but it's what we have, so it at least gives you a snapshot. When we start looking at, you know, this category goes up a couple of calls, this category goes down, keep in mind that 70 calls a day to kind of keep it in the overall picture. The Officer Assaulted Report, you can see, other than the monthly numbers change, we are only, you know, one different from 21 to 22. These next are what they call the Part 1 crimes, so for the benefit of those that haven't heard this before, the FBI breaks the UCR numbers into two parts. Part 1 are the major crimes, or what they classify as the serious crimes, and then Part 2 is the lesser crimes. I don't like using that term because to everyone, you know, crime is serious. Homicides, you can see we had one homicide last year. That arrest did not occur until this year. It was an arson-related homicide that we worked with AFD on, but the actual incident occurred last year. You know, and again, I'm not going to belittle people and read numbers, but you can see rapes down to 39, which obviously is good, right? But again, when I tell you that 70 calls per day, statistically, it's not overly significant. Same thing with robbery, up 24 to 35. Aggravated assaults. Burglary offenses. Larcenies, which we call thefts. Motor vehicle thefts. And then arsons. And again, obviously, we'd love for all these numbers to be zero, but when you see a difference between seven, again, keeping that 70 calls per day in mind. So these are the Part 2 offenses that I was describing, and I'll leave it up there because I know there's a lot of information to digest, but in short, and I'll go back to this, essentially, we're pretty consistent with the numbers in 2021. The biggest discrepancy between 21 and 2022 that you can see on this slide is on that third line item, which is fraud. You can see in 2021, there's a giant number there compared to years past, and that is slightly down. We really equate that to the numerous types of scams that were going on during COVID, between the COVID monies, and then unemployment was pretty rampant for a while, the different types of scams with that. So although those scams are still going on, they're less prevalent, and that would be the biggest... you can kind of see everything else is pretty similar. Some are up a little bit, some are down a little bit. And then when you get into the Part 2 offenses, because of the hierarchy rule with the UCRs, again, they're not the most accurate snapshot, but it's what we have. Some of these, as I've described in the past, which the next two slides we'll touch on, are really crimes that are more discovered through proactivity. So for example, when you look at our DUI statistics and you see that it's up from 77 to 91, that doesn't necessarily mean that more people are drinking and driving. It just means that despite the staffing issues we've had, we're able to do a little more proactivity. And I'll touch on this 91 number later on with the accidents slide and compare how many of those were for accidents and how many were proactive. It's the same thing with the drug offenses. So drug offenses are everything from a misdemeanor paraphernalia charge to, you know, a seizure of a kilo of methamphetamine and everything in between. So again, these numbers are typical. They go down when we have less staffing, and they go up when we have more staffing, not necessarily because the drug problem is going up or down, but because of the ability to proactively investigate. These next two slides, if you're going to actually look at the UCRs, are probably the best thing to, at least at a macro level. So again, with those Part 1 offenses, the more serious crimes, you can see, you know, I put on here 9.9%, but ultimately, that is approximately 90 incidents. So again, we have 70 incidents in a day. When you look at the Part 2 offenses, same thing, only in reverse, it's slightly lower. And then when you look at the total crime rate, we're within 1%. So ultimately, when you look at the, you know, statistical significance of these numbers, it's pretty safe to say that the crime rate remains similar to what we saw in 2021, which I will note, all these numbers are down from what they were in 2020. Same thing with the clearance rates. I put, you can see with Part 1 offenses, we're at 31.8 for 2022. That's a percentage, you know, about 1% less than what it was the year prior. Part 2, we're about 2% above, and overall, we're within half a percentage. So again, it's pretty consistent between 21 and 22. The traffic accidents, here's where you can see that there was 38 accident-related DUI arrests out of that 91, so the rest of them would be typically more proactive arrests. We unfortunately did have three fatalities due to accidents last year. These next two slides, I kind of want to touch on a little more in depth. Not that anything else isn't important, but these are things I think are pretty important. When you look at the juvenile arrests, again, obviously, we'd love, you know, keep going down, but that 70 calls a day, again, maybe not significant, but less juveniles were arrested for Part 1 crimes. The runaway is what I want to hit on. So when we have 89, they're not arrests, but that's what, you know, our numbers count them as arrests. The 89 doesn't necessarily represent 89 individual kids that ran away. So for example, what we deal with and what we need to continue to do better on is the same youth running away multiple times. Runaway today, tomorrow, whether we find them and bring them home, they return home voluntarily, or a lot of times, they actually show up to school and the school removes them as a runaway. But then the next night, the next week, the next month, they run away again. What I can say is, in the last six to eight months, I have seen some movement in the positive direction with cooperation with the county resources between CYF and juvenile probation. There has been positive movement in more getting services to these families, identifying why the runaways are happening, and ultimately giving them resources that, quite frankly, is not what the police are meant to do, nor are we equipped to do it. So there is some positive light in that, and I'm encouraged that we're going to continue moving on in those directions. The next thing would be the overdoses. It's obviously no secret that, you know, drug use in this area is, you know, high. A lot of our crimes are related to drug trafficking or, you know, people that are under the influence of drugs. So you'll see in 2022, it's pretty similar to what we saw in 2021. I threw up the 2023 year-to-date numbers, which, you know, is encouraging. We're slightly behind where we were, but there's obviously 2/3 of the year left. What I will say is, and especially with our, and I'll touch on how we're investigating them differently, but with our fatal overdoses, we're seeing a lot of toxicology reports that are, you know, working with the Blair County Coroner's Office, where we're seeing a lot of multi-drugs in the tox screens. So we're seeing fentanyl, carfentanil. We're now starting to see, well, we've been seeing methamphetamine mixed in with there, and now for the last year or so, we've been seeing tranquilizers such as xylazine, which I will say that I was encouraged, a week or two ago, Governor Shapiro announced the attempt at a legislation to make xylazine not just a prescription drug, but a controlled substance, which would hopefully help combat that a little bit. But we're seeing more of that mixed in. So when you buy a packet of so-called heroin, there's often not heroin in it anymore. It's often a mix of those other drugs, which is extremely dangerous, and, you know, you don't know what you're getting. Along those lines, when we had historically overdosed deaths, it would be assigned to a detective, and that detective would just get that case, along with the many other cases that detective has. These drug delivery resulting in death, which is an actual charge, these investigations are extremely hard. They require a lot of almost historical information that you have to dig up, and more and more technology, between the download of cell phones, social media, and accessing different points of data through, quite frankly, the various networks. We saw a need to kind of change the way we're doing it. So in 2022, we formed the Drug Delivery Resulting in Death Investigative Team, which includes patrolmen in the patrol divisions, staff services divisions, narcotics division, and the CID division. 12 officers received different types of specialized training, and we took it more of a team approach. The team investigated 26 fatal drug overdoses in 2022, which I'm proud to say they were able to make nine total arrests for the actual charge of drug delivery resulting in death from four of those cases in 2022, which I don't want to speak for the district attorney's office, but I believe if you talk to them, nine arrests of the charge of drug delivery resulting in death from a single department in a single year is unprecedented, at least in this area. So that is something that we're going to continue to try to work on. Kind of transitioned to just some other events. You know, the Altoona Police Department has always enjoyed the just unwavering support of the community. We recognize that that's a privilege and that we need to continually earn that support, so our officers are really good about getting out of uniform and doing various community events. I'd just like to highlight some of them. On this slide, you'll see we do various events to try to raise money for different organizations. The PA Special Olympics is an organization that we really try to support with both the law enforcement torch run and the polar plunge. We also participate in our second annual No Shave November, donating money to the Amelia Share Foundation. The FOP also participated with the Fire Union in a Guns vs. Hoes charity hockey game, which ultimately donated over $4,000 to family services. On top of that, you know, numerous other charity events, National Night Out, Home Run Derby at the Altoona Curve, Coco with the Popo, providing winter hats and gloves to local youth in the APD lobby. And we participated last year, placing 400 flags on veterans' grave sites in the Fairview Cemetery on or about Memorial Day, which is something we're going to be doing here in a couple of weeks again. Also, strong partnership with Professionals Auduboy and their charity work towards Christmas gifts for, you know, youth that are otherwise not necessarily going to have a great Christmas. Between the donations they collect and the donations we collect, they were able to provide Christmas morning for over 100 local children. Bike Patrol, so the full-time bike patrol was disbanded several years ago, mostly due to staffing issues, but we wanted to find a way to reincorporate the bikes to engage the community. So last year, we sent five officers away to bicycle school. There is actual school, how to ride a police bike, believe it or not. And manpower permitting, training the bike officers, you know, the trained bike officers are assigned during their patrol shifts and/or assigned to community events. Started it last year, and we're already continuing it this year. I also had this on my last year's annual report. We're continuing with the community engagement details, where officers are assigned, you know, to basically get out of their cruisers in smaller neighborhood areas and try to address some concerns of those areas that are mostly non-criminal that often can't be addressed because of the patrol call volume. So we continued those in 2022, and we're going to continue them. Last year, I gave you some goals, just to touch on what we did, the evaluation and change APD's organizational structure to make the department more efficient, as I kind of showed in the, I know I went through them quick, but we moved people around. And I got to be honest with you, long-term, it may not be the great idea because we're putting a lot of work on individuals, but we tried to reassign and move tasks to people so that instead of doing this random task over here and random task over here, trying to make them more in line and more efficient. Again, it's more of a shorter or midterm solution because ultimately, you know, we need to get more staffing. Policy review is turning into more of a continual process. It's just the day and age we're in. It's not an annual or biannual thing. We just need to continue doing it. With the addressing of staff, we hired 11 officers in 2022. However, we keep seeing the same recruiting and retention issues that law enforcement sees nationwide. I already touched on how we increased proactivity, both in patrol and through details. That's why some of those Part 2 crimes are slightly up, and we want to keep working on the proactivity. I already noted in our community engagement how, you know, APD contributed over $14,000 in monetary donations on top of collections of goods and foods, and the recreation of the bike patrol and community engagement details have us out in the community more, and we want to continue that. And then individual training for officers on top of the mandatory training, trying to identify what officers are good at and what they want to be good at. It not only is good for the department for obvious reasons, but it gives a little more professional growth to the officer and, you know, helps with some job satisfaction. And so finally, just with the 2023 goals, you know, we're going to try to address manpower needs. We are a third of the way through the year, so I'll try to give you updates, but this addressing manpower needs is just going to be constant. We're going to continue to be dealing with it. I reported last year on our patrol rotation into the CID division, where we had patrolmen temporarily assigned upstairs as detectives. Again, professional growth, but it also helped the department. This year, we wanted to expand it, and we did. We have our first rotation in the narcotics division. I was happy last week to announce our two canines are operational. However, we want to continue to evaluate ways to make them more effective. And the last two are just going to always be goals of ours to continue with our high standards of training and assess the training needs of the department, and continue to find new ways to increase community interaction. So that's our goals that we're already working on and will continue to work on through this year. Just want to make sure I, you know, I thank the hard-working men and women of our department. They're doing a lot. They're doing, every day, they're expected to do more and often with less, and they really do care about this community. And again, we'd like to thank our community for supporting us in the way they do because we recognize that not every police department has that luxury. So I know I kind of breezed through all that pretty quick, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer or go back to whatever slide you want.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
All right, move on to the resolutions.
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, April 10, 2023. Item B is approving a contract for professional services for the comprehensive plan with CZB LLC of Bath, Maine, in the amount of $200,000 payable from community development block grant funds, further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is approving a tax collection agreement between the city and the Elton Area School District for collection of the city's per capita tax for the period January 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is awarding the 13th Street and 23rd to 28th Avenue Drainage Improvements Project to CHD Enterprises of New Stanton, PA, in the amount of $764,305 payable from ARPA funds, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is awarding the Juniata Civic Association Roof Project to Halton Contracting of Lime, Lexington, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $55,025 payable from ARPA funds, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is authorizing a standard bridge reimbursement grant agreement with PennDOT for bridge restoration of South 12th Street Bridge, South 16th Street Bridge, and East 25th Avenue Bridge over spring run in the city of Altoona, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is authorizing the submission of the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant Grant Application from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Financing Authority for the Horseshoe Mountain Bike Trail Project in the amount of $294,117.65 with $250,000 payable from the grant and $44,117.65 payable from the city, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item H is authorizing an agreement between the city and Central Pennsylvania Behavioral Health Collaborative for crisis intervention training for the Altoona Police Department and further authorizing Mayor Pacifico to execute the agreement and the city clerk to attest to same. Item I is adopting the 2023 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Programs and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents and certifications and the city clerk to file statements and certifications and meeting minutes with the Department of HUD. Item J is approving three repository bids submitted by Jasmine Rolling of Lunar Eclipse of Philadelphia in the amount of $100 for property located at 1926 12th Avenue, in the amount of $100 for property located at 1900 to 02 10th Street, in the amount of $100 for property located at 2409 to 11th Oak Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district forms. Item K is approving a repository bid in the amount of $800 submitted by Ancient House Holdings of North Hampton, Pennsylvania, for property located at 417 to 19 South 8th Street, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item L is approving a repository bid in the amount of $350 submitted by Curtis Craig of Citrus Heights, California, for property located at 1619 to 21 20th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item M is approving a repository bid in the amount of $500 submitted by David Anderson of Spring, Texas, for property located at 3127 to 33 6th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item N is approving a repository bid in the amount of $650 submitted by Kalen Dolman of Charlotte, North Carolina, for property located at 208 to 10 East Cherry Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item O is approving a repository bid in the amount of $500 submitted by Tyshay Hill of Jacksonville, Florida, for property located at 1521 20th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Are there any deletions or anything that needs to be pulled for a separate vote?
Yeah, J through O.
Okay. And that's going to be pulled for a separate vote?
Yeah, J, K, L, M, N, O.
All right. I'm going to call for the consent vote on all items. A through I.
A through I, okay.
First, Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Carper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
And Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the consent vote passes seven to zero. And then on items, J, we're going to have to do these separately. Okay.
Oh, really? We can't just say no once times however many?
Because I do it stuff.
Yeah, that's cool. It's all good. Either way, we're not interested in more blight.
On item J would be, I'm not going to read the end of all these.
You already read them.
I did, but I normally read them to the end of the record whenever you're voting, right?
You know, I was thinking about that for now on. Should I just say something and say, hey, if you only want to read it once, let's just pull it now? Or how do you want to go about that?
The parliamentary procedure is read them and pull them once you want.
Read them again.
Okay. That's cool.
Okay. Item J is going to be approving three repository bids submitted by Jasmine Rolling of Lunar Eclipse. Let me go back here so you guys can see they're following along here. Of Philadelphia in the amount of $100 for property located at 1926 12th Avenue, in the amount of $100 for property located at 1900 to 02 10th Street, and in the amount of $100 for property located at 2409 to 11th Oak Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
The vote does not pass. And then we have item K, which is approving a repository bid in the amount of $800 submitted by Ancient House Holdings of North Hampton, Pennsylvania, for property located at 417 to 19 South 8th Street, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call the rule for a vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
The vote does not pass. Item L is approving a repository bid in the amount of $350 submitted by Curtis Craig of Citrus Heights, California, for property located at 1619 to 21 20th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
The vote does not pass. And then we have item M, which is approving a repository bid in the amount of $500 submitted by David Anderson of Spring, Texas, for property located at 3127 to 33 6th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item, that was M. Item N is approving a repository bid in the amount of $650 submitted by Kalen Dolman of Charlotte, North Carolina, for property located at 208 to 10 East Cherry Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
And the vote does not pass. Item O is approving the repository bid submitted in the amount of $500 submitted by Tyshay Hill of Jacksonville, Florida, for property located at 1521 20th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilman Carper.
No.
Councilman Ellis.
No.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
Nope.
And the vote does not pass. And then we have two ordinances for introduction, which, the first one is an ordinance of the city of Altoona amending the code of the city of Altoona to revise Chapter 633 entitled "Street Vacation" to vacate a portion of an unnamed 15-foot alley located between East Southie Avenue and Frost Avenue, Altoona, containing 3,102 square feet. In the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, reaffirm Chapter 633 as amended, provide severability and repeal provisions, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member that is willing to introduce this ordinance?
I will.
This ordinance is introduced by Councilman Beatty. The second ordinance for introduction is an ordinance of the city of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of a 15-foot unopened alley between East Southie Avenue and Frost Avenue pursuant to Chapter 295-8 of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a quitclaim deed to Rebecca S. Barker and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, and/or interest the city of Altoona has or may have in said unopened alley, provide severability of provisions, repeal her, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
Don't move.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Ellis.
All right. We'll move on to city manager updates now. Omar.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, just a couple of items. The one, probably the most important thing I'm going to talk about relates to the fact that we're going to have representatives from CZB in town next Monday, a week from today, to meet with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee to discuss the process going forward. It's really what they call in their, CZB calls Phase Zero, which is really just kind of getting started. Also, on that day, members of staff will be taking those representatives around in a van, a tour of the city, to kind of let, give them a flavor of what the city's like and some of the more important items that they're going to need to take into consideration as we, you know, move through, move forward through the planning process. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that probably some of you were in attendance at the Volunteer Day at Prospect Pool on Saturday. There was a pretty hefty turnout. And actually, went up there today and was looking around and there was actually a good bit of work that was completed. So, those are all good things. We're looking at opening the pool for an opening day on the 27th of May, which is the Saturday before Memorial Day, and not, and then reopen the pool on a regular basis the following Saturday, which is June 3rd. Just want to point out that about two-thirds of my time right now is devoted to dealing with aspects related to Prospect Pool. I know Nate is probably devoting a lot of time to it. And our HR director is also devoting a lot of, a lot of time to, you know, staffing up that organization. So, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that and that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Omar. Move on to council discussion items. Councilman Kelly.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Carper.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
I was just glad to see we're finally to the point where we're going to be looking at the comp plan. And we got a real opportunity here to clean up some zoning and various issues here. So, thanks to all who worked on that to get it to this point.
Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, Mayor. Had a chance to participate at the cleanup day at Prospect Pool. Probably, what, 50 folks or so, maybe even more, to help participate. My oldest, Samuel, was relentless on painting. So, a reluctant dad, not sure what was going to happen with such granted, granted a yes. And he had a good time. So, really looking forward to the pool being open this year for the community and hopefully we have a chance to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ellis.
Just a few things, Mayor. First, I want to thank Omar and the staff for the work on this Prospect Pool. I realize this was dumped on you because of the mismanagement and the poor way that this has been handled over the last few years. And I appreciate the work that everyone's doing to try to, to get this thing in the right direction. I also, this is just sort of a question I'm throwing out here because I just want to know how we got to the situation to the point that the issues over two trees at the homeless shelter became a media event, and why it wasn't discussed and settled before, or what happened there. And I'm just throwing that out there. And where does it go from here? Does anybody have any follow-up to that? Or do you want to talk off, we can talk offline about that, but I'm just a little concerned about what.
I'd be glad to talk about it now. It's already been put in the public.
Well, really, it's in the hands of the City Planning Commission. I mean, they, and the developer. So, I mean, that, the, there was a land development put together. I think Planning Commission, I believe, although I wasn't in attendance at the last meeting, I think as I mentioned to Councilman Ellis, I think I was doing interviews for Prospect There is, you know, there was a, there was a clear land development and it was clear to staff what was involved. I think it was clear to the developer, but I think that's, you know, that, that was part of the development. There's a dispute about that. The Planning Commission, you know, gave their ruling. That's, that's their jurisdiction. And I believe, you know, it's really up to the developer to do what needs to be done there in terms of what was in the land development and what is, you know, what was the ruling of the planning, of the Planning Commission. Whether there can be some resolution other than that, I don't know. But, I just, that's where I
All right. Thank you. Last thing is, the Overflow Church is doing a cleanup program every Wednesday, the month of May, in the east, I guess it'll be the southeast corner of the city, essentially from Lloyd Street to 8th Street in that area. And last week, they filled a complete roll-off of debris. And all, in addition to that, they're partnering with Improving Our Neighborhoods, which is a nonprofit put together to supply building materials and stuff to help some folks in need. And they repaired porch railings on one back porch and began repairing and cleaning out a garage space. So, good work by Overflow Church. Thank you.
Councilman Beatty.
I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up for the Prospect Pool cleanup and the, the workers that helped install the hood for the fryers up there. That was a combined effort and I think we probably saved, until we get done, we've probably saved close to $10,000 on the install of that hood. So, you know, the community's really bought into this project and they're supporting it. And you can tell by the turnout and the energy that was there. I think Jesse got the award for the most adorable young painters there. And they, they worked, they worked hard. And, you know, we accomplished quite a bit. We painted the concession stand red. Sheets is going to provide a, a nice gift of food to get us started up there. And we felt that was right to recognize them for their contribution. The bathhouse was painted blue. It was nice to bring some color to the complex up there. Everything was white. And as we get the logos put up and get it dressed up, I think it'll really come together. We pressure washed lawn chairs, you know, cleaned that part up, painted the pump house and cleaned the pool house. And then we went through and inventoried the items we still need. We need some free, big commercial freezers. There's a link on the website for Prospect Pool if you'd like to donate. We do have it run through the Central Pennsylvania Foundation. Is that correct? That's not been approved yet, but it has been forwarded to them for consideration, yes. Oh, okay. So, the donations at some time in the future will be tax deductible. And we could use probably close to $25,000 to finish everything up, up there. So, any, any gifts from the smallest to major ones would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo what was already said about the cleanup day. It was a great event. We had great weather, great turnout. We got so much accomplished and I'm really looking forward to a good opening, or a good poll season this year and a good opening day. We'll move on to questions from the media now. Phil.
Thank you. Any comment from council on the Edible Forest presentation and the Greenway Hub?
Sounds like a good idea. I was going to ask how many on that list are
I was going to ask how many on that list are good for, like, Pennsylvania? Like, how many plants would work in our climate here? Oh, cool. Very nice. Nice.
Any comments on Joe's presentation on the police, the APD's annual report from council?
I think the police department in Altoona does a fabulous job considering, you know, the staffing issues and the type of job that they have. Our officers are very pleasant. They respond quickly every time our home alarm goes off. They're deeply appreciated. And, you know, every time I run into the patrolmen, they are friendly, kind, very professional, and I think we're lucky to have them.
We're not only blessed to have our police department and the great folks that work there, but we, as the chief was saying earlier, we are very blessed to live in a community that supports the police because that is very important. They have our back 24/7, so we, as a community, need to have theirs.
Bill, I don't think you can lose track of the fact that they're responding to 70 calls a day. All right, there are 66 officers that are divided into multiple diverse parts of the department, but they're answering 60 calls for service, or 70 calls for service a day, and I think that's very impressive, the work, the way that work gets done. And as far as the, specifically from my work history, the four cases out of the 22 on the drug overdose cases, that's actually a phenomenal number. I mean, you know, my guys investigate a lot of.
I didn't catch the beginning of that.
The four cases of the 22 overdoses that resulted in those arrests is a phenomenal number. I mean, my guys investigated drug overdoses, and to get that kind of evidence to be able to file charges on that many cases is just phenomenal to me.
You mean because of the difficulties of.
They're very difficult cases to investigate, and it's just a very difficult culture to deal with to get any information out of. A lot of them are based on phone information, pulled, extracted from cell phones. A lot of these places are cleaned out. The evidence is flushed before the police or the paramedics even get to the scene. So to be able to arrest, make arrests on that number, I think, is pretty significant.
Anyone else?
We have an excellent group of officers at APD. Obviously, we're facing some challenges that we're also seeing across the nation as Chief Merrill had elaborated to. I know the city's made some strides to help improve those, you know, when it comes to attracting and retaining our officers. But I can't say enough good about our officers that they are, they're dedicated to keeping our community safe, and our crime rates, I think, reflect strongly that.
Nate, could you say what the status of the mountain bike trail is at Horseshoe Curve, or, you know, off of Glenway Road?
I think up to date, Bill, it's been basically a grassroots effort by a group of passionate bikers, so.
But is there, the trail exists already, right?
There, I believe they have a main loop, and they've been working on some other loops.
Do you know how long the main loop is?
Five-plus miles.
And what will the grant, what does, if you get the grant, what would that do?
I think the group was planning to add some more safer parking off the roadway and just trail development and building.
Trail development and trail building?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on this?
I'm just at that group I know has met with ABCD also, and there's also another group that it's, it's kind of spurred from a grassroots effort, and I can't think of the name. You'd have to call Steve McKnight and find out, but there was a group that they met with, and they were really, I guess, excited about what they were doing, so they were looking to also participate in some planning and trying to create a, you know, a network similar to maybe Alagrippis down in Huntington. So there was a lot of discussion, I think, at that group.
Okay. Joe, could you talk a little bit about the Central Pennsylvania, about the agreement with the Central Pennsylvania Behavioral Health Collaborative and the training that's going to be?
Yeah, so the county started up CIT, Crisis Intervention Team Training. It's been shut down for years, and we finally got it up and running. One of the main pushers of that, to give him a shout-out, is Kermall Wine with the county. But essentially, through Blair Health Choices, they applied for a grant to reimburse overtime for officers that attend that training. So the training, the first training already occurred. It was several weeks ago. So this agreement will allow us to submit to them reimbursement for officers overtime for attending that week-long training.
Submit to whom or what?
Blair Health Choices.
Oh, okay. And could you say, is there, I mean, given what happened on the New York subway recently, is that sort of thing happening more frequently around here?
So I know I've even spoken over the last several years at this, at these meetings, and I've been speaking, the CIT training's absolutely a necessity for law enforcement officers. Specifically, the county-run, one of the biggest reasons it needs to be run by the county is the training not only deals with some de-escalation and addiction stigma training and things such as that, but it also informs officers of resources in the county that they can forward people to. So it kind of bridges that gap between it's midnight and officers dealing with someone in crisis, but no one wants to answer the phone to help that person. So the fact that the training finally got back up and running is huge, and we sent numerous officers to this first round. We'll send more to the next round, and this grant just helps offset some of the costs because, you know, with staffing issues, you send eight people to a week-long training. There's obviously overtime involved, so we're very grateful for this grant and the opportunity to help reimburse some of that.
Okay. Is this related in any way to the, to the program that the AG's office set up that I don't think the county has approved yet, but for the warm handoffs?
No, apples and oranges.
Oh, okay. And Tom, could you tell me, the two introduced ordinances?
Yes.
For the alley vacations, is that the same piece of alley, or are they two different?
No, one of the alleys is actually an opened alley, which is why that's under Chapter 633. The other one, they're in the same general area, but they're two, they're two different things. So one of the alleys is actually an opened alley, which will be vacated. The other one is what you would call like a paper, a paper alley. It's never been opened, and there's a separate procedure under the city code as to how you vacate and abandon the interest in that. So that's why you have the two separate ordinances.
Okay, and it's both because of this, the car wash proposal, right?
I know it's in relation to a development over there, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Meaning it's a journey.